Alright, let's go ahead and get started. Just give me a second to get this all settled in. Okay, perfect. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. My name is Rob Shams. I am the founder of Reason Prep. I do all the videos and the website and all the courses, all that good stuff. So today we're going to talk about SAT and ACT. Any questions that you might have about either test? As many of you probably know, the test is coming up for the SAT this Saturday. And then next Saturday, we're gonna have an ACT test, June 10th. So I'll take anything. I'm sure most of the questions will probably be SAT oriented. But I take questions on SAT, on ACT, SAT subject tests, APs, college admissions. Really quite a wide range. And if you're not sure if I answer it, if I answer that question, just ask it. And who knows, I might be able to answer it. But most of the focus will be on SAT and ACT. Now, if you want to have a question, if you want to answer as a question, go to ask@reasonprep.com. And you can send an email to that address. And if you send a specific question on an SAT or ACT, like a problem, if you can send a picture, that would be great. But certainly the answers and certainly the answer to the question, just so I know if I'm doing it right. And source of the question, if possible. You can also ask questions in chat and I'll try to get to them as well. But primarily, if you can send them to the ask@reasonprep email address, that would be great. So a nice comment from someone in chat, "This channel got me a 35 on the ACT." That's pretty darn good. So I'm sure, I'm sure I can take a little bit of credit, but I'm sure the hard work that you put into preparing was the biggest reason why you got a 35. But if I can help even a little bit, that's awesome. Yeah, so let's, I got some questions ahead of time, so actually let me just post on Facebook that this is happening and then we'll get into questions. Maybe I forgot to post it? Oh, well, doesn't matter. Nah, just do this. Hopefully that link works. Alright, sorry for the delay. Alright, let's do this. Okay. Oh, so to follow up, "I got a 28 for the English. My first practice test went through your ACT English Bootcamp and got it up to 32." Nice. Alright, so let's start with some questions. So I got a chat question. We'll start with this one. Okay. "On the SAT, I'm really bad at rearranging sentences in the writing section. Any tips to improve?" So this is in the writing test. You also see these on ACT English. These are these questions where you are told that you have to look at sentence three or something. And you need to know, should you keep it where it is or should you move it before sentence one? Or after sentence five, or anything like that? So it's all about rearranging sentences. So I do have a few tips for this. I go through this in more detail in the SAT Writing Course and ACT English Bootcamp, which is available for free on my website, members.reasonprep.com, or you can see them on YouTube, but it's best, best results on my website. So you can get those courses. So some quick tips though for these. First thing you want to look for. First thing is you have to read the whole paragraph. So a lot of times students get tunnel vision with the sentence. And they just focus too much on the sentence and not get a sense of the paragraph as a whole. So make sure you're reading the whole paragraph. You can't get away with on either test really, just reading portions of the passages. You do have to read through the whole thing. You don't have to read through the whole passage before you go to the questions, but you do have to read through the whole thing as you go along. Second thing to look for is look for key words or phrases in the question. Examples would be names, dates, titles, terms. So for example, if the sentence mentions a name, maybe it says Rogers. Rogers said this, Rogers said that. Most likely that sentence is going to have to come after the person's introduced. If they use a term like, um, I don't know. Doesn't really matter, um, entanglement. So if they use a fancy term like entanglement and you want to know, and that's been defined elsewhere in the paragraph, well then probably this sentence is going to go after a definition of entanglement. If the sentence you're moving has a definition of something or introduces an idea, or if it says something like, "This theory states..." These are all clues telling you this sentence needs to be either before or after, depending on the case, other sentences in the paragraph. Another point is look for logical flow. And this is principle number two. I talk about the four principles in my courses for rhetorical skills. You want to make sure that your choice flows with the sentences around it. So for example, look for transition words, like however, for example. Or for example, for example. Uh, look for transition words, look for, what was the other thing I was gonna say? Crap. Look for transition words and yeah, I guess we'll leave it at that. Look for transition words. Oh, and chronology. So if it says something like then, blah, 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 you know, this is part of a sequence of events. Make sure it fits the chronology. The final thing to look for is if you have to move the sentence, look at how the sentence interacts with its new neighbors. So if you're gonna move a sentence to sentence two's position, how does it interact with sentence one and sentence three? You want to look at that flow with the immediate sentences around it, sentence one and sentence three. So those are some general tips for these types of questions. Again, it applies not just to SAT, but also to ACT. And like I said, I go into a lot more detail in this in the courses, the SAT Writing Course and the ACT English. Question about subject tests. "In math level one, if I answered 40 answers correctly and 10 wrong, how will they calculate my score?" So every, this is for subject tests. This is not going to apply for the regular SAT. The scoring is different. The subject tests use the old system for scoring. So whether you're taking math one, math two, chemistry, physics, literature, world history, whatever you're taking, it uses the old system that used to be in place for the SAT. They haven't gotten rid of it yet for the subject tests. Where you'll get plus 40 for your 40 right. But then you get 10 quarter points off. You lose an extra quarter point for every wrong answer that you get. So that would mean your raw score would be 40 minus, uh, this is 2.5. And so that would be 37.5, which then ends up to a 38. And then you take that 38 and they would take it to a table that then translates that 38 into a scaled score, something from 200 to 800. So the key difference on the subject test is you do get a quarter point off if you get a question wrong. If you leave it blank, you get no credit. So you don't lose any extra points, but of course you don't gain anything. The general rule of thumb for subject tests is if you can eliminate two or more choices, guess. So this is really the only thing you need to know. Don't need to complicate it any further. For subject tests only, not SAT, not ACT. If you can eliminate two or more choices, guess. Uh, for SAT and ACT, there's no penalty to guess. So you always guess no matter what. How come I always get grammar SAT questions wrong? Well, it's hard to say specifically in your case, why you might be getting them wrong. Beyond the fact that there are probably rules that you don't know, or rules that you're just not as familiar with. And I think one of the things that gives students the most trouble, and this is true for the SAT and ACT. Unlike the way we speak to each other, where we make grammatical mistakes all the time and no one cares, well, some people who care generally don't like them. They're kind of pedantic. But generally we make mistakes and we can understand each other perfectly. On the SAT and ACT, they're really strict. So they follow rules in ways that you maybe don't follow them in your speech, or in even things you read. So, uh, part of it is knowing, okay, the SAT is going to be really strict and their sentences are going to be read extremely literally. So an example, this always seems to give students trouble. So here's an example of what I mean by this. So a sentence like this gives people trouble. Because if you read it one way, it seems fine. Doesn't seem like there's an error. But there actually is a big mistake with this and it's very rule based. Driving down the street, the red house came out of nowhere. Seems like it might be okay, but there's an error. This is called a misplaced modifier or dangling modifier. The way the structure of the sentence is actually reading, if you read this literally, which you should on the SAT or ACT, is that the red house is driving down the street. That doesn't make any sense. Somebody, someone we don't know. This is actually a dangling modifier, not that it matters. Uh, it's, we'll just call it a misplaced modifier. We don't know who is driving down the street. So how would we fix this? We would have to say, uh, something like this. Driving down the street, the family noticed that the red house, or something like that. I mean, I've changed the meaning of the sentence a little bit. But this would be more correct than this. And this is what I mean by, you know, you might read that first sentence and say it's fine, but it's that literal strict sense of the rules they need to learn. So if you don't know the rules, check out my ACT English course slash SAT Writing Course. Available completely for free. They're on YouTube. They're on my website. And they teach you all the rules. Once you learn the rules, you'll see how it repeats again and again. And then you'll go from there. Question on ACT Science. Any tips on how to take apart? Any tips on how to take apart a science passage on the ACT? Sometimes I feel like there's so much going on in the passage, it's hard to keep track of everything. So you've answered your question essentially. There is too much going on in the passages such that you can't keep track of everything. So don't. The goal for ACT Science passages is to minimize the information that you're trying to absorb, that you're trying to work with. You do not in most cases need to understand absolutely everything with the passage, or have a handle of everything. You only need to handle the things that they ask questions about. And so that's why my strategy, for example, for ACT Science is not to read any of the passages at all. Go right to the questions and use the questions as a way to determine, okay, what do I need to understand? What are they asking me about? What do I need to go and figure out and understand? Anything that they don't ask questions about, it's pointless. Don't need to worry about it. So the key here is not actually to try to figure everything out and keep track of everything. It's to focus on questions and use the questions as a frame by which you can analyze the passages, analyze the charts and figures, get answers. It's all about focusing on questions. It's the same thing in many ways with SAT reading and ACT reading. Use the questions. The questions are your friend. You get points for getting questions right, not for understanding the passage, right? I mean, it seems like there's not much of a distinction between them, but there is. If you perfectly understand a passage, you don't get any points for that. You get points for getting questions right. So always keep the focus on questions. So more of a personal question. I'd be happy to answer this because I'm all about transparency. Uh, I was wondering how you're able to make a living purely off of creating test prep videos on YouTube? Or is there another side job that you have? So I do test prep, SAT, ACT full-time. This is all that I do. And there's a number of ways I do make a living. This is what I do. I somewhat support a family on this. Uh, I have a wife and a kid. So this is, this is a career. This is a business for me. It's not just, you know, obviously there are certain motives that are more altruistic, but in the end, there's self-interest here as well. So, uh, one of the things I do mostly is tutoring, so online tutoring. And local tutoring. That's probably one of the major streams of revenue. And then the other one is selling courses on my website. So I sell SAT courses, ACT courses. And putting that together, I'm able to support myself. So the videos I put up on YouTube are twofold. Number one, I enjoy helping people. I enjoy students getting value out of them. But they're also kind of advertisements. People see what I do. If you like my style, if you like the way I teach, then you can work with me or use my courses. So I'm very open, unlike I think a lot of other companies, for example, they don't really want you to see anything. I'm really happy. That's why I do these live streams. I mean, I'm totally cool telling you my deepest darkest secrets when it comes to the SAT or ACT. Because, you know, number one, I want to help you. But number two, if you like those, then you'll probably want to work with me, or you'll want to use my courses. So that's, that's basically how it works. Alright, so we got a specific question about grammar. Test two, section number two, question eight. So if you haven't done this SAT test yet, then you might want to not pay attention to this, but this is a specific grammar question. So for those of you who are having problems with SAT grammar, you'll get an idea of how I analyze a question like this. And I assume you're talking about this question? So the correct answer is D. But if you removed the underline portion, wouldn't it be a comma splice? So what do we have here? While these classes are particularly helpful to young students developing basic research skills, but adult patrons can also benefit from librarian assistance in that they can acquire job relevant computer skills. So no, this would not be a comma splice because this is all about sentence structure. This opening part of the sentence is what's called a subordinate or AKA dependent clause. And as such, because it's dependent, it's dependent on a complete sentence. The only time you get comma splices is when you have a comma separating two complete sentences. This is a non-complete sentence. It's dependent. The sentence that follows, when you get rid of the but, is an independent clause. So structurally, you're, in fact, you cannot have any, uh, what's called a coordinating conjunction, separating these two things at all. So no end, no but, no for. So immediately, this is an example of, we were talking before about grammar. It's recognizing structure. So this word that connects these two sentences, once you know this is dependent, this is independent, the structure you know is separate them with a comma and a comma only. So right away, boom, 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 A, B, and C are gone, and you pick D. So it's all about knowing structure. There's nothing subjective about this. This is not a matter of opinion. This is not a matter of taste. It's a matter of knowing the rules, recognizing structure, and then picking the choice based on that. Uh, there's another follow-up question about another, uh, grammar question. I'm going to come back to this one because I want to get to some other people's first and then I'll come back to it in a little bit. Question that I'm going to ask a follow-up about, how to prep for both the SAT I and SA II at the same time? Uh, which SAT II tests are you prepping for? I think I recognize you. I think you're doing math two, I think. Just let me know though, uh, whether you're doing SAT I and like math two or chemistry. And let me know as well in the chat. Let me know as well in the chat, the test dates, when you're taking the tests. Uh, that versus those for SAT grammar. You don't see this too often. The one place you would see this on the SAT is with what are called comparison errors. And the main thing, and I'll show you an example of this in a second, but the main difference that you need to know for that versus those is that is singular. Those is plural. So if these are pronouns and pronouns are all about what's called pronoun agreement, whether they're targeting a noun that's singular or plural, they have to agree. They have to match. So if you're talking about, uh, the book, you would, you would say that, or that book, because it's one book. If you're talking about multiple books, you would say those books, right? Not that books. So it's all about singular versus plural. Now where on the SAT would this come up? So this would come up and we'll do, try something a little bit different. I'm going to try to experiment with something. I'm going to put a question on the screen and I want you all to in chat, reply with your answers, what you think, if you want, you don't have to. Uh, reply with what you think might be wrong, uh, what might be the, the right answer for this. So let me come up with a question here. And this sentence like doesn't mean anything, so I'm just making up stuff. So here is our sentence. I'm going to underline a portion of it. So the analysis of the job market is more thorough than the financial market. And I'm going to put four choices here. And what I want you to know in chat is which one you think is correct. Last choice. Alright, so here are our choices. I'll give you all a minute to figure out what you think is the right answer. And then, uh, and then we'll talk about it. So if you want to say in chat what you think it is, that's cool, or not, I will, uh, give you the answer in a little bit anyway. Okay, pretty good consensus in chat. Looks like C is the consensus and that is the right answer. So this gets to the core of the question. Why is it C? Why is it not the others? This is a comparison error. The original sentence is comparing the analysis of the job market to just the financial market. We have to compare like to like, analysis to analysis. So the reason why C works is that of singular is basically pointing to the analysis and is standing in for it. So you also, and those are other ways to have this be right. You could say is more thorough than, than the analysis of the financial market. Or than the financial market's analysis. Or even than the financial market's apostrophe S. A lot of possible corrections. This is the most common, use that of. Uh, so the original is a comparison error. B is better, except just like we talked about before, those is plural. We need this to be singular to point to analysis. And then D is just super wordy. It gets rid of the than, which we do want as a comparison. So we don't like D. So we go with choice C. Alright, so I have some more questions from, from Skittles about grammar. I'm going to get to those if I can. Uh, if I don't, just know that I have video solutions to all of these problems. So test two, section two, on YouTube. So if you go to my YouTube channel, look up the writing course, all the solution videos to those of theirs. If I don't get to them, because I'm going to try to get to many questions, um, let me know. If you don't get to them, check out the, the courses because there's solutions there. But like I said, I will try to get to maybe one of them. Depends on the question. We'll see what I can do. "How can we benefit from the score report when it comes out for the purposes of increasing our score?" Frankly, the score reports for the, for the new SAT, I'm assuming you're meaning new SAT, are just bad. They used to be so much better, so much more useful in my opinion. You know, they've added numbers on sub scores which are useless. Uh, like one of the most important things they've eliminated is they used to be able to break down the number of easy, medium, and hard you got right of each question type. That was really useful because you would know, okay, I'm having problems with easy geometry and you would know what to study. Or, oh, I'm having problems with hard such and such. They've removed that. Uh, you can go to the College Word website. I think they have a bit more detail. It's more narrative of like, okay, you should study this, you should study that. Frankly, it's pretty useless. I think they want you to basically like use Khan Academy, I guess, as like a link to it, which is why they're not as forthcoming with it, I guess. Like the PSAT, for example, it's the same idea. Like you can load your results into Khan Academy and they'll draw up a kind of, um, a plan or like a set of questions you can look at, which is pretty useful. But they're just not as forthcoming as they were. Uh, the things I look for, let me just switch over to a score report. How do I do this without doxing somebody? Let's see what I can do. Yeah, okay, now I don't want to pull up someone else's score report. Uh, if any of you want to send me your score report, nah, nah, it's not even getting to that. I don't want to dox anybody. Yeah, so, uh, one of the things I do offer is, if you go to my website, this link, you can just go to my website and just look under tutoring. Uh, I offer free score report analysis. You can send me your analysis and I will let you know, uh, what I think in terms of what you should study next. Okay. SAT test six, question three, number 19. Okay. So again, this is from an SAT. This is test number six. Section three, question 19. If you haven't done this, I would have just, I recommend, um, turning your brain off, not watching, checking Twitter. Oh, this question. This, okay, so I answered this one on a previous livestream. Let me, you know what I'm going to do with this question? Because this question is so popular. Uh, I'm just going to make a separate video on this. I'm not going to do this one right now. I'm going to make a separate video because I get this question so often because it's such a monstrous question. So, uh, sit tight. I'm going to try to make a separate, well, you know what? Let's do this. Let me, let me do it now and then I'll just make a video out of this. That's easier. Why would I just do this again? Okay, so let's do this question. Again, if you haven't seen this test, this is test six, official SAT. Uh, I recommend not watching this. Or you can kind of like, not listen to me and try it on your own first if you want to do that. So how many liters of a 25% saline solution must be added to three liters of a 10% saline solution to obtain a 15%? So for those of you who just want a formula, if a question like this ever comes up again, let me give you a formula. And that is, uh, the percent of the first one times the volume of the first one, plus the percent of the second one times the volume of the second one must equal the sums, or we'll do this way, must equal the percent of the, the total mixture times the sum of the volumes. So this is a formula you can use for any questions where you want to have, where you have mixtures and you want to, um, and you want to find like how much of one you need to create a mixture of such and such. Uh, as a side note, if you've done chemistry questions like these, they're a lot easier. If you haven't, yeah, they're a lot more painful. So we can just plug in our numbers here. So the percent of the first one, so make that 25%. And you can make this 0.25 or 25, it's the same. Uh, liters would be X, that's what we're looking for. The percent of the second one is 10, and we've got three liters of that. The total percent we want is 15. And the volumes added up are X for the first one plus three. And so I'm not going to go ahead and solve this, but if you go ahead and solve this, you'll get the answer, which I believe was 1.5. And so that's a formula you could use if you don't want to worry about where this comes from. In terms of how you can do this without a formula, basically it breaks down like this. We want to create a ratio, saline on top and total volume on bottom, that ends up equaling 15%. In other words, 15 over 100, or we can just say 0.15. So I need to know what is my total saline that I have in my mixtures and what is my total volume overall? Well, total volume is easy. We know it's three plus X. X being the volume of the 25% solution, which we don't know. How much saline do we have? Well, in the case of the three liters of a 10% solution, uh, saline, 10% of three, or 0.1 times three, is going to be the amount of saline in that solution. For the one that we don't know, how many liters of 25% solution, that's got to be 0.25% times X, because again, X is what we're looking for. And you'll actually see if you rearrange this, you get this equation out of this. But that's kind of the justification for where this equation comes from. And again, if you cross, multiply, and solve for X, you'll get the answer. So really tricky, um, unfortunately, I've been trying to think like, is there an easy way that I missed? That, that makes this problem really easy. And unfortunately, I just don't think that there is an easier way to do this. So, um, those are two ways to do it. If you have any others, feel free to leave a comment in the comments, if you're watching this on YouTube later, or leave a comment in chat. And, uh, yeah, if there's anything easier, but those are two ways. You can memorize this formula. And, uh, yeah, if there's anything easier, but those are two ways. You can memorize this formula in the case this comes up again. Or, uh, this one. This kind of reasoning may perhaps make sense to you. So following up about a question earlier about how do you study for subject tests at the same time as SAT? That's hard because you do want to be able to focus as much as possible. The more that you split your efforts, the more it's gonna be difficult for you to do this. Uh, exciting for three tests at once. It's just really hard. So the number one tip is try to avoid that. Try to target the SAT two bio math level one first to get those out of the way and then worry about SAT. Uh, otherwise, if you do have to mix, focus on the ones that are coming up more recently, obviously. So maybe do like in this case, you know, if you're studying, let's say six days a week or five days a week, you would do like two days of this, two days of this, one of SAT and then adjust the ratios as you need to. That's probably the best way to do it. But like I said, the ideal is to not really try to get yourself in that situation. In the first place, if you can't, you can avoid it because that's just, uh, unpleasant. It's like why I say you don't want, really wanna study for the SAT and ACT at the same time. The more you can focus, the better things are gonna turn out for you. What do we have to do before the night of the exam in terms of biology subject? Do I do the exams review the topics? I don't know if I can follow the same steps that I follow with SAT one. So I'm not a super expert on, on, uh, subject tests in bio. I'm sure it's pretty similar to other tests in many ways though, in terms of how you would prepare. Uh, the night, I assume, yeah, the night before the exam, um, generally what I recommend is not to do anything. It's best to relax and get rest, but let's, I assume you mean this in the context of not having prepped. Like if you've done a month of preparation, what you do the night before is probably not gonna matter. And if anything could anti-matter in the sense that yeah, if you cram and stay up too late and get wound up, you might have a bad morning and that's not good. You wanna relax, calm yourself, keep the cortisol down, stress hormone and, uh, focus on good performance, good execution the day of the test. If however, you're cramming or you just haven't studied much and you're just really short notice, so you need to study the night before, then I would do definitely practice exams timed. You wanna get used to the timing. Cause that's the main thing. You only have an hour for your subject test and that goes by really quickly. So definitely focus on time. When would you use nevertheless in the SAT grammar section as a transition? So overall, it's part of the category of contrast. Contrast. So you would use it primarily when you're trying to contrast some previous statements to the statement in the sentence. Uh, it's synonymous with the word despite. Right? Nevertheless, such and such, or despite this and this and this, blah. So what would be an example of how nevertheless? I think the best way is to see an example and uh, you'll get the idea. I'm gonna fix this. Okay. Uh, I really want to go to the party. Nevertheless, I can't. I need to study. So what we're using the word nevertheless here to do is heighten this contrast between the desire to go to this party. And you know, despite that, nevertheless, even though I want, another sentence would be even though. Right? Even though I really wanted to go to the party, despite the fact that I wanna go to the party, I can't. So it just heightens that contrast. Um, yeah, so that's basically how it's used. It's pretty close to however. There's I think slight shades of difference in meaning between nevertheless and however. Um, I'd have to think about exactly what that difference would be, but just know it's a word of contrast. It's used to show a contrast between previous sentence or sentences and the sentence that it's being used in. What strategies do you recommend to tackle the SAT subject tests, especially math one C and biology? So again, biology, not a huge expert in it, but honestly, from what I know about biology, there's really one major thing. And besides doing, I mean, both, for both of them, practice tests, of course, practice tests, timed tests, that's essential. But more specific for each one, biology, you have to do some kind of recall activity like flashcards or something. If you, uh, same thing would be true for history, for example. Uh, something that's very content heavy where you have to know a lot of stuff. Simply reading books, reading textbooks, reading notes, it's not gonna do anything. You have to force yourself to produce the knowledge on demand. And so flashcards is the easiest way to do this. Right? So if I say to you like, what's the forced, what's, I don't know, what's the process of cell division? What are the different stages? You should be able to go boom, 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 right? If you're able to do that, that's when you know that you know it. If like you're reading through a book and you say, oh yeah, here are the, the stages of cell division. Okay, this seems to make sense. I know this. You're tricking yourself. You don't really know it or you don't really know if you know it. So flashcards, forced recall, being able to produce the information on demand. That is how you know you know it. So that's the main thing for biology. For math level one C, I would say, and this is also for, uh, level two as well. You can do the same thing with formulas and facts. So they don't give you many formulas on the test or facts or references. So making sure you know those on demand, know the formulas, know concepts can help. Beyond that though, yeah, practice tests and targeted review. So knowing which, uh, question types, which types of problems give you trouble and seeking out resources or help to address those. Those would be the main things to do for those tests. What's a good resource to learn how to do the more advanced ACT math questions? Because I never learned anything in school due to people not paying attention and slowing the classes down massively. So the first thing I would say is you should only really worry about this if you're going for 30 plus. And I know your ultimate goal maybe is 30 plus, but if you're scoring, let's say a 22 right now or 25, worrying about the hard questions in, uh, the numbers 51 to 60, which is basically where they show up is not a priority. So it really depends on your situation. For most people, learning this stuff is not important. Or at least not yet important. However, if you're already in the high twenties or low thirties and you wanna go higher, then you should worry about this. That said, it's a little bit tricky. So topics that would fall under this would be things like matrices, vectors, uh, complex numbers, combinations and permutations. Little topics that you may not have some statistical stuff. Uh, stuff that you may have never been addressed or maybe only looked at briefly. Uh, it's, it's tough because it's so hard to find good material on this. Uh, my course has covered a little bit, but I can't go into the depth that you would get into it in a math class. The, the videos would just be way too long. Um, so Khan Academy might be, be a place to start, not their SAT section, obviously, but just their regular math algebra two pre-calc section. Might be somewhat overkill, but it, it, this is why it's hard. It's hard to like, if you take, uh, vectors, for example, or no, combinations of permutations. Most of what you would learn in like an algebra two on combinations and permutations or pre-calc won't be on the test. So it's finding that balance between learning enough, but not learning too much. That's so tricky. Uh, and I, I mean, Khan Academy might be one way to do it if you don't go overboard with it. This is where it gets tricky. Prep books, maybe. You know, if their content review is good, but often it's not. You know, I, what I like to do is just Google worksheets. So I'll Google like vector worksheets after maybe learning something on Khan Academy. But I don't know, honestly, and I'm a great answer to this because they're so rare. Like another example would be logs. The thing with logs is it's pretty standard in most classes. You may have learned it or may have not, but maybe only learned it briefly. But like you only see log questions once every two or three tests. So it's like, do you wanna spend a day learning logs for one question that may not even appear? I don't know. It's tough. Again, this is why it's important only to do this when you're shooting for that 30 plus score and when you're already pretty close to it. So Khan Academy prep books, I would look and see what their content review looks like. Uh, my ACT math bootcamp covers these advanced topics. So check out my site, ACT math bootcamp. I do cover these advanced topics. Some of like the core basics of them, which may help. Uh, cause you only need to know the core basics. So that might be enough. Um, so hopefully that helps, but it's, it's a, it's a difficult problem and it's definitely an area uh, that needs to be addressed and I would love to be able to do it if I had the time. Okay, subject test stuff. So this question, how many mistakes would it be to get 700 plus? I'm gonna say like how many mistakes and still be, let's say, 720? Plus, so let me get at my thing here. Now every, every test is different. Every scoring table is gonna be different. This is just gonna be an approximation. So don't like, uh, I'm using by the way, the official, uh, subject test guide for this. Uh, every test is different. All, and this is just gonna be an approximation, but I can at least give you a basic idea of what it looks like. So for math one, counting the minus one quarter, assuming you put an answer down for all 50. Let's see. One, two, three, one, two, three. Six-ish, it looks like. Six wrong would probably be enough to keep you in the 720 range. Again, this is just a, an approximation. Uh, six. For bio, let's see what it would be. Okay, bio. Looks like it would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. 11 to 12. So you have a pretty good room to run in bio. Same would be true of math two, chemistry and especially physics. Uh, math one, you definitely have less room to run. That's for sure. It's an easier test, so yeah, not gonna have as much room to make mistakes. So I'm gonna follow up on this. Uh, Skittles, which, uh, with trig for which test? You didn't specify. Okay. What tips would you give for someone that has a big difference in language and math scores? I took an SAT already and got a 570 on language and 750 on math. So you have a good news and bad news. Great news is that you're 750 math. You can just kinda go on autopilot there, try to consolidate, get to that 800 plus if you can. 750 is already a really good score. So that's good. That means the bulk of your time is gonna go into the, uh, reading and writing score. And two things, number one, lean heavily on the writing. There's probably, there's certainly more gettable points in the writing than there are in the reading. Writing can improve a lot more quickly than the reading can. So lean on that. Extract every single point you can get out of that. Try to get to like a 35 plus in the writing, 35 out of 40. That would be the goal. Uh, my writing course can help you with that. If you're not already, check out my YouTube channel or my website. I've got a free writing course for the SAT. Reading is where it gets tricky. It depends a lot on how much time you have until your next test and how much time you have overall to study through your test prep time. But start with reading today, start tomorrow. Uh, because you need to get onto that immediately. That's gonna be the harder one to improve. And it's just gonna be about a lot of reading, practice, test, practice sections, reviewing your answers. I have a reading course on my site that might help. Uh, so check that out. But yeah, get started today. You wanna probably, in your situation, you probably wanna focus on reading, I would say three to four days a week in your study schedule. So if you're studying for five or six days a week, depending, again, it depends on your specific situation, but the majority should be in reading. That should be where your time should be spent for sure. I believe this was somewhat addressed in chat, but I will answer it anyway. Is there a list of transition words that start sentences? So there is a video, the previous livestream, I, I don't know which one it was, in one of the, the highlight videos. Uh, I went through the, the one of the livestream highlights. Check that. Cause I know I highlighted it in one of the videos. Uh, I'm actually planning eventually on creating a resource for this. I just haven't gotten a chance to do it. But yeah, check my, I think it might've been the previous one. Try number seven. I think it was number seven. Try number seven. I go through the kinda three categories of the type, question type of these opening words there. Uh, follow up about this one, because I'm not exactly sure how to answer it. I'm really bad at pick which exponential growth or decay is correct when they give you an explanation in the math section. What should I do? Uh, if you can give me a specific example or I don't know, just refine the question a bit. I think I have an idea of what you're saying, but I wanna see if you can maybe make a bit more specific. I don't know what to focus on when studying for the SAT one. So should I focus on writing because it is easy to increase in this section or better focus on reading because it will need more time? So both, you want to study for both. There's no one or the other. The only ti, I mean, even if you're at an 800 and one, you would never give it up completely because you wanna maintain that. Uh, so you definitely wanna study on both. Now which one, I guess you're asking which would you put more time into, like focus on? Um, depends on your scores, depends a lot of factors. I can't say for sure. I would say once you can get your writing up to 35 plus, then you should put a lot more of your effort into reading at that point. But it depends. Like I was saying for the last person, given their situation, they'd wanna put, I think you always wanna put more time in reading no matter what, because writing should be relatively easy to improve. You don't need to put in a ton of, a ton of time on it. Uh, yeah, I'm trying to vary live streams a little bit. Uh, it's hard given the diverse audience that I have here. I've got a lot of Americans and people in my time zone. Uh, and of course I got people from Egypt and from all around the world. So it's hard to get stuff, but I do try to vary it. Um, typically, of course, I'm gonna, uh, cater more towards the Western audience because that's just my time zone and that's just most of the students I'm working with. But I do try to vary like on Sundays, for example, I usually do afternoon ones. I don't know if that would help you. Let's see, that's a six hour difference. Yeah. If I did it like a one or two, that would be seven or eight year time. So I do try to vary it. So yeah. Uh, the, the weekend streams will be much more likely to be at a time that will be more reasonable for you. But as the summer goes along, um, I'm gonna vary a lot. Okay, so trigonometry for SAT. Uh, what concepts do you need to know? There's not that many, which is great. So SOCA TOA. Definitely. Uh, radians to degrees conversions, unit circle. And uh, that's it? Sin, cosine, tangent of 30, 45, 60. And yeah. That's pretty much it. Not much, there's not much trig on the SAT. There's maybe only one question per test. Uh, maybe two in some circumstances. This is the core of this. Really not much. It's pretty simple. So like law of sines, law of cosines, reciprocal functions, inverse functions, graphs, trig equations, trig identities. All that stuff you learned in algebra two or, or trig whenever you took it is not on this test. Now ACT is different. Uh, there's a lot more of that on the ACT, but this, it's very, very thin. Honestly, I don't even know why they bothered including this. It's a big waste. I don't know. The, uh, I won't, I won't get into it. The SAT, I don't know. I don't really understand a lot of the decision making, but it is what it is. Taking it this Saturday, any last minute tips or advice, key concepts? Uh, main thing is again, I can only be really broad here because I don't know specifically, there's a lot of things we could talk about for each of the sections, but I'll give something that's pretty general that helps really for any of the ta, any of the sections. And that's read the answer, answers carefully. Duh. But also more importantly, what people don't often do is make sure you check all the choices, especially in reading and writing. Too often students kinda find, that once they find an answer they think is right, they pick it and they move on. Check all four choices, especially in reading and writing. Because you may find, oh, I thought B was good, but then I checked D and D looks good. And now you have to make a choice between the two. Oh, I thought B was good, but then I checked D and D looks good. And now you have to make a choice between the two and maybe reevaluate what you thought about B. So check all the choices. Don't just find one that works and go hooray and pick it and move on. Be thorough. And of course there's a balance here between thoroughness and time. And you gotta strike that balance. I think most students err too much on the time balance, trying to rush to finish it. Uh, you'll generally get better results by slowing down, being more thorough and deliberate as you work through the test. And as I talked about elsewhere, skipping questions that seem hard or time consuming, moving on, banking your easy points and coming back to hard questions later. That's essentially the workflow. One other thing as well, this is often overlooked by questions, uh, by students, reread the questions. So important. I would say a good chunk of the time students get stuck or they get a question wrong, whether it's math, reading or writing. Is they don't read the questions carefully enough. And so that happens sometimes, what you should do when you're stuck on a question, whether it, no matter the section. Is don't just dwell on the choices or dwell on the math or dwell on the passage. Reread the question and really focus. The question is designed very carefully. The wording of the question matters. So reread the question. A lot of times you might notice something that you didn't notice at first, and that can make a big difference. Another specific question about an SAT. So again, this is from SAT three. If you haven't done this test, I would not. Pay attention to this. We're looking at section four, number 28. Okay. So this is an exponential. I think this is what the, the question was about. Uh, there's a previous question about exponential and how you pick it. Okay. So. In planning maintenance for cities infrastructure, a civil engineer estimates that starting from the present, the population of the city will decrease by 10%. Every 20 years, if the present population of the city is 50,000, which of the following represents this engineer's estimate? Of the population T years from now. So this is all about knowing the structure of these exponentials and, uh, what goes where. And the first thing is what number goes in here? Very important. This is going to be one plus the percent as a decimal, if it's an increase. Or one minus the percent as a decimal. So since this is decreasing by 10% or point one. What must be in the parenthesis is point nine. So right away, A and B are gone. We're down to C and D. So now it's the other difference here is going to be what's in the exponent. And the way I think about this is let's imagine. Uh, we want this, we want T to be 20. Cause every 20 years this goes down by 10%. So we should be applying 1.9. For every 20 years. So what would happen if T is 20? This would end up being point nine to the 400. This would be point nine to the one. What makes more sense? We would apply 400 sequential 10% declines. For 20 years. That is just absurd. Or that we would apply one 10% decline for that 20 year period. One, obviously. So we would go with D. So plugging in numbers, thinking about what value this should return for given inputs of T can help you figure out what goes up here. Yeah. And so that would be the answer. So basically to answer your question generally, break it down. Don't look at it as a whole. Look at first what's in the parenthesis. How does that correspond to the percent change? And then look at your exponent and see what makes sense. If I made T 20 or if I made T 10 or T 5 or T 1 or whatever it might be. I've got about five minutes left, so I'm going to take some more questions if you guys have it. And. Uh, any more questions? Feel free to, uh, put them in the chat or send them to me. I'm going to try to address these last one. Uh, one to improve my 680 English to 750 plus. What should do with six hours? So basically get sleep. If you're, if you're sacrificing sleep, don't do any of this because sleep is more important than anything you could study. In the last, uh, last, uh. Six hours. Uh, I know none of you drink alcohol, but, uh, being sleep deprived is equivalent to being drunk. So you can imagine, again, not that you drink, but would you take a test drunk? No. Would you take a tap sleep deprived? Too many students say yes. So if this is going to cut into your sleep, don't do it. That said, if you have the time. If you have the time, focus on writing because that you're going to get the most bang for your buck. In those six hours out of writing, maybe do a little bit of reading, just review, but really put your time into writing. Uh, particularly, again, I don't know what questions you're getting wrong, but rhetorical skills questions. And if you don't know what those are, check out my writing course. I have a whole section on rhetorical skills. That should be what you should focus on for that period of time. So a question, okay. So let me address this in, in the chat or in the livestream, because this is a common thing I get. So anyway, you can get the most common idioms together in a video or document to help students for the writing section of the SAT. English is not my first language. Yeah. So the whole idiom slash diction word choice questions. Uh, the answer to this unfortunately is going to be no. And it's not because I don't want to, I wish I could, but it's just kind of an impossible goal. And even if I could, I don't think it would be helpful because if you think about English, there is like, I don't know thousands, tens of thousands of idioms. There's no way we can know what ones are going to appear. We know what idioms have appeared previously, but almost by definition, that almost means they'll never appear on future tests. Why would they reuse, right? Why would they reuse them? So what do we, what do I do then? Do I just go through all of English and create an idiom list? It doesn't seem very useful. And also spending your time, like I honestly can't think of anything more painful or. Brutal. Well, that's a bit exaggerated. I can't think of many things more intellectually unpleasant than having to study lists of idioms. That's just sounds awful. Um, life is more than studying lists of idioms. Uh, so even if I could, I don't think you'd want to use it. And most of all, there's really only one to two of these per test. And you could also get a lot of them right, either by guessing or by knowing them anyway. So the possible gain you can get out of an idiom or a diction list. Uh, you've put diction together, then that's like another one to two questions. So maybe like two to four per test are, are in this category. The possible gain I think is so minimal for the time investment that I just don't think it's worth it. Uh, you can get a really good writing score just by focusing on the other questions and doing your best that you can on the idioms. Uh, if you Google like SAT idioms, you'll find stuff. I don't recommend using it. It's, it's, it, it doesn't seem very useful to me at all. So I would, I would skip that. Don't know if about the biology subject test, but there's two types, ecology molecular. I don't know what type I should choose. I already studied for E, but M looks more easy. Again, I'm not a bio expert, so I would seek out other resources that would tell you. I think my general understanding though, was that molecular was harder and therefore more respected. Uh, that could be false though. So I don't really know. I would definitely look, I mean, basically look which one is more prestigious. And if you can do that one, do that one. Um, if they're both equally prestigious, then do whichever one you like. Uh, I don't think it matters that much. Again, I'm not an expert, so I would, I would seek out another, I'm not an expert on this, so I would seek out another, another source for that. Well, solving practice tests. Uh, improve the score, especially in the reading section. So solving a test and checking it thoroughly will increase my score. Or is there any other thing? So for reading in particular, that is the main activity and really the only activity. Certainly longer term, you can. Read, right? You read all kinds of stuff. I've got a reading list on my website that you might want to check out if any of you haven't seen it. Uh, but in the short term, yeah, all you can do is do tests. And then most importantly, as you mentioned here, check every question, even the ones you get right. Sometimes you can get stuff right for wrong reasons. Uh, the reading section also really benefits from tutoring, or if that doesn't, that's not possible. You can't get help from a tutor or a teacher or a course, then working with friends to correct each other and, and reason and out with each other. The reading is the most intensive, labor intensive. Section. And it's the one that increases the least, generally speaking, uh, because reading is. You know, it'd be like, I, I say, I use this analogy all the time. It's not exact, but it's similar. It's like, if I want it like, let's, I don't speak French. Let's say I wanted to take the French equivalent of the SAT, which had a reading section. Would there be any tips that would save me? Was there any shortcuts? No, I have to learn the language. And then once I learn the language, I have to do a lot of reading and more reading and more reading and more reading to gain that skill. Uh, so it's not really a short-term project. Now that's an exaggeration, right? All of you here are English speakers at some, to some degree. But the analogy is still apt because. You can't suddenly get better at reading in two weeks. It's, it's a process. Uh, you're not going to be like. When I go through reading pa, like for example, reading passages to me, read the reading test is generally easy. Is it because I'm like a brilliant reader? I'm pretty good, but it's because I'm 32 and I went, I went to, I went to, I did my full high school career. I got a, I went to Cornell for my bachelor's, Cornell for my master's. I almost did a PhD and I've studied SAT to prep for this for six years. Of course it's easy to me, right? It's, it's, it's not comparable. So. Uh, it's, it's all a function of the time and effort you put into it. So certainly doing practice tests, reviewing them is key. And then, uh. And then, uh, if you can, if you've got the time, doing consistent reading, outside reading, paying attention in English class, all that stuff, it, it adds up over time. So yeah, but definitely in the short term, reading and then reviewing your questions, reviewing your answers is absolutely critical. This is pretty similar to, uh, what I've answered before, but I got this as an email. I want to make sure just to get to this. SAT subjects, math one is two days away. What would you recommend to a fully prepared student 24 hours with the exam? Okay. Yeah. A little mix of just reviewing your formula, doing your flashcards if you have them. Uh, maybe doing a few questions to keep you fresh, but otherwise relax. Definitely don't cram the night before. Relax, see a movie, hang out with friends, play computer games, read, do, do whatever you find fun. And that's going to be much more valuable, especially if you're fully prepped than anything you really could do. Maybe a little bit of maintenance, light maintenance. Um, maybe the morning of, you might want to just do a few problems to get warmed up. So you go into it smooth, not cold. But yeah, if you're fully prepped, just relax. That's the best use of your time. Okay. This will be my last question unless anything else major comes up. How to improve your essay scores? So I have a whole course on this, so I'm not going to go into insane details about this. I have a free SAT essay course on this exact topic. So this is the link. If you just go to my website, members dot recentprep.com, you'll find the essay course. So yeah, you just go there and look. Uh, it's completely free. So no charge. And I go through exactly what you need to do. It's like an hour long course. To get a high score for the reading analysis and writing portions of the essay. Uh, so definitely check that out. I also offer a separate essay grading service where you send me your essays. I grade them. And I give you feedback. That is not part of this course. It's a separate thing that you have to purchase, but more information. Excuse me, on that is also on the site. Interesting follow-up. So I'll just post this because it's, uh. Somewhat interesting. For me at least. Whoa. Helps me learn about these tests. So M is difficult for English native speakers, but in Arab area, we already studied M in the school, but E needs more English vocabulary. Yeah. So there could be regional differences. Uh, I think most, you know, I think about just American high schools, probably. It depends on your course structure, but I would think almost M would be more in line with maybe what you've done in your bio classes. I'm not sure how much. Ecology is a little bit, but in any event, yeah, it's probably, I think that's probably a key as well. I think E is going to be much more term based, maybe. Rather than conceptual. I don't know. So certainly regional differences would, would likely make a difference. I take the ACT on June 10th. How would you prepare the last few days? I don't, part of this answer depends on what you've done already. How much you studied, what you studied, your current score level, your goal, things like that. So it's hard to give a really specific answer to this. Beyond, I would say do a, do a timed reading or science test. Uh, especially because you gotta do more of that because I'm guessing those are two areas that are probably some of your lower scores, I would guess that how it is for most students. And you really want to get good at the timing, get a good at time management. And the only way you can do that is with timed sections. So yeah, I would recommend timed sections. Uh, otherwise it's hard to know, given your situation, but the most important thing is to, to timed sections. Any other things for the writing section other than practice tests? Um, Khan Academy has like specific questions about certain topics. Like, uh, comma, splice the sentence structure, comma usage, dashes, colons. That might be pretty helpful. There are prep books. Like Erica Melzer's book, which have exercises about certain topics that could be helpful. Watching my videos again, if you watched them once, watch them again. Helps you absorb it. That would be another thing. But yeah, practice questions, practice tests. Yeah. For writing is, you don't have to do full practice sections every time. You can just do targeted questions. That's absolutely fine. Uh, whatever. Yeah. And writing is a lot more flexible in that regard because timing is usually not an issue. Uh, so you can just do a lot of practice stuff. For that, including tests, sections, all that good stuff. Is a grammatically incorrect if I end a sentence with is? Not, no. That, I'm just thinking of an example. That is what it is, or. It is what it is. Here would be an example. Not necessarily. I think it's pretty rare though. Typically is as a verb is going to be. After the subject, which is right in the beginning, as we see here, it is what it is. Uh, so it's impossible, but more likely than not. Ending a sentence with is would probably be wrong. All right. So I guess with that, let me just make sure we have no other questions. It doesn't look like it. So with that, uh, good luck to everybody who's taking the SAT tomorrow, or sorry, today is Thursday. Everyone who's taking the SAT on Saturday, uh, and I will be having more live streams, probably one next week before the ACT. And then certainly through the summer, like I was saying before, in response to another question, I'm going to try to vary them through the summer, given that. All y'all are going to have much more open schedules. Uh, I could do ones in the morning and that might help with everybody, everybody who's either in. My time zones or somewhere near them, or on the other side of the world, morning times might work better for everybody. So I'm going to vary it and I'm going to try to have a bunch more. So feel free to, uh, send me questions in advance. Uh, if you, uh, aren't already join my Facebook group. You can find more information on this on my website, reasonprep.com. Reason. Prep.com. So there's the SAT ACT. Study group. Uh, I give, we answer, we have a bunch of members there, a very active community. We answer questions on all kinds of topics related to the SAT ACT. I, I make announcements, I post videos and tips and stuff there. So if you're not a member of that already, uh, join, it's on Facebook. So you'll need a Facebook account. If you don't have one, you could just make up a fake one or whatever. Doesn't matter. To me at least. So. There's that. Uh, join my courses again, members dot reasonprep.com. I've got all the information there about tutoring, other resources like that. Uh, join my mailing list, which if you join my courses, you will potentially get access to. I announced there when I'm going to have live streams. The highlight video of this is going to be posted on YouTube tomorrow, probably. And where I'm going to boil it down to the highlights and timestamp it. So all that stuff should be good. Anyway, thank you all for watching. I hope this session was helpful. Good luck on Saturday and I'll see you guys in the next stream. Bye-bye.